All right, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. At first, I would like to start it off with the pledge allegiance to the flag. I would love for Jerry Frederick to lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Breckus, Deuer, Delgado, McKenzie, Jarden, Bobzine, Chievi.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to dive right in and let's go into public comment, Madam Clerk.
Our first public comment, Madam Mayor, is from Tammy Holt Still, followed by Johnny Madrid Lawrence.
Good morning, Mayor Chievi, Reno City Council. My name is Tammy Holt Still. I come before you again today, representing myself and the Lemon Valley flood victims. This is your second notice, which you have received a copy of. For the record, we are requesting that the city of Reno halt or establish a building moratorium immediately in all of the north valleys as the water runoff from those buildings are exacerbating the flooding in the Lemon Valley. The runoff from all of the buildings in the front of Lemon Valley, Golden Valley, and Stead has five times the amount of water going into Swan Lake without any type of infrastructure to Swan Lake to accept that water. In the early 1990 reports warned of increased flood damage if mitigation measures were not adopted. Washoe County engineer and Capitol Projects Director Dwayne Smith stressed anything going into the basin that would not stop the water or would stop the water from going into the ground, a building, a roadway, any type of physical would reduce the impervious surface. The issue is that it doesn't allow the water to get into the ground in the same way it did historically. In the county's 1991 flood control master plan identified closed lake basins as one of the several sources that warranted additional consideration in the selection of flood control options. Hydrologic analysts from Lemon Valley prepared in 1996 for the city of Reno warned that if in regard to future development, since Lemon Valley is a closed basin with no outlet for flood runoff other than evaporation, increased impervious areas anywhere in the valley can cause the amount of water entering the playa and thus the level of the playa to increase. A report by Maeder Consulting conducted for the county in 2010 outlined flood mitigation options, but when it came to Lemon Valley, the cost of the large-scale projects determined to exceed potential benefits. Really, look at us now. This in turn goes right back to the violation of Code 110416.57 by the city of Reno, which has caused loss of homes and Lemon Valley residents, a way of life they hold dear. If I can find any way to prove criminal negligence for the city of Reno and its employees for the catastrophic disaster that has been created, it is my moral responsibility to do so. I hope you understand it is horrible to have your home flooded and I hope one day you have it happen to you so you can feel it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Johnny Madrid Lawrence.
One second. Councilwoman Deuer, I know that you have an L item on this subject today.
I do. Would you tell me your first name again? I'm sorry. Tammy, thank you, Tammy. I just want to validate a lot of what Tammy said, that I've seen those reports. As a previous flood project director, you know, we're going to need to work very closely in the county, with the county going forward to approve any kind of future things. And I think it's a testament to this city council that we actually denied a project tentative map that was proposed for the area. Later on this agenda, I have an L item to ask the city itself to look in areas where flooding has occurred in the city boundaries and to look at what actions we've taken in the past and start putting a plan together for what actions we need to take forward. And one last thing, I don't want to take a lot of time, but you mentioned about cost exceeding benefits and it's very, very difficult for people to understand. I've spent a lot of time with these, what they call cost benefit models. They work terrible in basins. We had the same problem trying to get the cost benefit to pay off for the whole flood project. And what it basically means is that when you're in a basin, it just doesn't work the way it does on a plane when you're in Sacramento. So I just, we're hearing you. I went to the Lemon Valley meeting. I heard the testimony from the people and how upset they are. You have very valid concerns and I think this city council is going to take it very, very seriously. So thanks for coming today.
All right, thank you very much, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Johnny Madrid Lawrence, followed by Sam Denae.
Hello, Madam Mayor and the rest. I'm not sure how to start. I really love talking to you. At the end of our pledge, we say liberty and justice for all. I am not sure if what we always just talk is talk, but liberty is a fine thing for others and justice will be justice that prevails. Even an individual like myself who has been in this scenario with the city of Reno and I'm supposed to have prevailed, but I continue having to go higher up the chain, up to the Ninth Circuit. So that's where we're at, okay, with justice prevailing. If it's not going to prevail in any federal court that all the individuals in front of me are tied to the city and have violated my civil rights, but nobody wants to seem to put my justice in front of with their justice. Again, had it have been one of them or their children, justice would have prevailed, okay? Scales are different, I understand. Speaking on this woman right here from Lemon Valley, if it was anybody's house right here, if it was all your houses, you would have it fixed just like you did the dam out there. I mean, the stream out there, the river that you've built up to make look so good so it doesn't flood your house right here, okay? I understand that. We look after ourselves first, self-pervailing, prevailing, whatever. It's hard to try to tell you all how somebody feels because you really don't care. How do I know you don't care? Because you do not take care of your citizens. The people who have voted you in, the people who thought you were going to take care of us, okay? Problem, this is a sanctuary city. I'm not being political here. I'm just explaining. If you call the police and tell them that there's an individual screwing up, they will come. I just left the police department this morning. They did inform me that it's nothing they can do about illegal immigrants that are committing crimes in our city. It takes the feds to do it and they, as probably well as everybody on this council, are not going to call them. Why? Because they're not living next to you and causing you problems, okay? They are working class people who are paying taxes and who are shopping at our stores and spending money. I can understand not wanting to lose those people, whoever they might be. I noticed 7836 interviewed top candidates. I'm wondering, are those candidates going to care about their... I'm a 100% disabled veteran. I have my own problems. I think I'm speaking very clear. Whether it's anything that entitles me to be that way, I'm not sure. Again, I don't think any of you really care about veterans because we are not, as Mr. Trump, the new president would say, not that I voted for him, but anyways, as he would say, we're supposed to have the best of things taken care of us, okay? Because we served our country. We have disabilities, whether you can see a leg missing or an arm missing or an eye missing or my face all scarred up. All that doesn't matter. May I have a few more seconds?
In the interest of time, we're going to make sure that we continue to move on. So I'm going to give you 20 more seconds.
That's fine. I appreciate your 20 seconds of courtesy. I will be back at number six and I will be back this afternoon then. Because what I'm saying is really not clear to you. I mean, I can't go on people's facial expressions, but that's not pretty, the one you're making now. If anybody got a picture of it, when you see it, you'll understand. I must be irritating, Your Honor. I don't mean to be. Imagine having a shooting in your neighborhood. I don't think you can, can you? Thank you, ma'am. It's bad. We have shootings in our neighborhoods and they're like shooting everything up, okay? And nobody will come and help, okay? Explain to me, what do we need to do? Come here more often?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Sam Denae.
Sam Denae, that's me. Sam D-N-A-D-N-A. The heart, soul, body, and mind of Reno government. Philanthropic. Everything I do is philanthropic. I am the guard angel against, I'm the guard angel against everything evil in Reno, starting with the dysfunctional media mouses. Not that young man running the camera over there, although they won't be allowed to put Sam on camera. Yeah, nice smiley face up there. I've been to every city council meeting since 1994, crusader, whatever you want to call me. I'm not a very good dancer. I'm not a very, very good football, basketball, baseball player. I'm a pretty up and walking good world-class boxer, although age has reduced my speed and power. But when it comes to guard angeling against media mouses, corruption, bungling, stupidity, arrogance, and vote-stealing traitors, there's nobody, there's nobody in the world any better than me. The media mouse over there, I won't say anything more about the media mouse other than they are pointing out that you folks up there, the well-documented dysfunctional Reno City Council. Oh, that would make me so mad if I was one of you dysfunctional people up there. It would make me so mad. But the only thing, you are somewhat dysfunctional, but you know what the most dysfunctional thing about you is? Is your insane lack of willingness to recognize Sam's humble greatness. For 25 years, they've been able to maintain their silence with Sam bringing in 92% of the good ideas in Reno. Well documented, Sam is living proof that the vote-stealing traitors are in control. We have a man back here who is morally living proof that the vote-stealing traitors are in control, but not from the way he thinks. Denae should have been mayor long ago. He should be governor now and his son should be mayor now. Nothing against the current mayor, who's doing a pretty up-and-walking good job. Your dysfunctionality is the fact that you refuse from some crazy bizarre reason to recognize the greatness of Sam Denae. He should be honored. He should be praised and he should be awarded. I should, you're nodding her head. I should be getting grants to support all of these things that I do philanthropically. Think of the great job I do right now, all by myself on the fixed income of a retired Air Force fighter bomber pilot. I live relatively frugally, fortunately. But anyway, I want to come up here and talk about our new city manager who's about to appear here in a few minutes. I've got a few things to say about that and I'd like to say that at the beginning of the discussion so that you'll know at least one citizen. By the way, you don't know it, but I speak for 300,000 people, 300,000 people. Anybody who reads the newspaper and believes it without at least 25 verifications is an idiot. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you over there. I don't thank him. Thank you, I got you back there. Thank you too.
Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Cesar Manera, followed by Jose Manuel Lopez.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and City Council. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and do the public comment. The reason why we're here, and I'm going to let everyone introduce themselves, it has to do with the issue that is going on with immigration at this point. We understand that at the federal level, there are some new rules that want to be implemented. And thinking of our city, I would like to speak on behalf of the Latino community. I understand that each community brings sometimes issues and each community at the same time brings good stuff to every community in the country. And we have a lot of concern, people in the Latino community. As a leader, I have received dozens of phone calls from business people, from church people, and just citizens concerned about what is going to happen in our city if it will be a city that would be a sanctuary for good-abiding citizens. We understand that crime, no one agrees with crime regardless of the ethnic background that you come from, but we understand that in each group, there is always good people, low-abiding citizens, hard-working people that I think that they deserve a chance to be here. I think it's pretty hard to imagine what it is to move to a country where you don't know the language, the customs, and everything that comes with it and have to survive and thrive when you have a lot of odds against you. So in this case, since I know that you guys have the ability to work with the Latino community and bring some ease into the heart of a lot of people, if you guys would... and bring some ease into the heart of a lot of people, if you guys would consider that, because I think it's, at this point in time, it's a big group of people that, again, they're really concerned. You will hear things in the media, Facebook, saying they are detaining people in a DMV or different places. So I think if we can find some, uh, space in our heart and figure there are things that we can do to, to help, and, um, I guess, uh, everyone here that came this morning, they are pastors from different churches, from Carson, Reno, Sparks, and I am sure that they would love to share something, okay?
Go right ahead.
Good morning. My name is Yolanda. Thank you for the opportunity. And I would like to share something with you guys. In the last six, seven years, the local churches and the law enforcement, we have been working together to, um, bring a message, you know, to the community, to our congregations. The, the law enforcement, they're not enemies. It's the other way around, is people that is here, you know, to help us and to make Reno a beautiful place to live. So I would like to share this with you guys. I believe if we don't do anything in our city, you know, to prevent what in other places is taking place, all the hard work that we have been doing in the past years, it will lost track, because we have achieved a lot of advance, you know. Now, the churches doesn't see the whole picture. They see Reno as a place where if we all work together, we can have it and keep it the way that it's been in the past. So thank you for the opportunity. God bless you, and thank you for the hard work you do for our city. Thank you for the hard work you guys are doing. We really appreciate it. My name is Letitia Lucky, and I come from Carson City. And I do work as a pastor and as a counselor for the Hispanic community. And, and I can feel the fear they have, you know, in their families, in their homes. You know, people are, uh, withdrawn from activities they're so used to doing, you know, and we really appreciate for the help and the support from the, uh, this community, you know, to help us out. I see people coming to Carson from Reno, and I would like to see some changes in the situation. I really appreciate for your help and concern that you guys have for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. My name is Christina Cruz, and I'm happy to, uh, to have this opportunity to see your faces, because I read newspapers and things, and I'm a citizen in this city for 25 years. And I think that we want to be united with us for the best for this, our city. Have a grand day for day.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
My name is Jose Manuel Lopez. I'm a pastor of La Iglesia Sion.
My name is Jose Manuel Lopez. I pastor Zion Church.
Here in Reno.
Here in Reno.
I've lived 25 years in the city. And we're asking and begging from you that consider the support for the good people who work with all of their efforts.
Uh, to take into consideration that there are hard-working people in this community.
Yeah, uh, the idea is that it's more the good than the bad.
Uh, there is a fact that there is always more good people than bad people.
And we need some help in order to help other people, you know, just to thrive and become a better people. You guys have the authority in your hands, and we want to touch the hearts of you so that we can have a real support and growth for each other.
We understand that you guys have authority to change things around, and we're speaking to your heart to help in that case the Latino community.
Muchas gracias. Que Dios les bendiga.
Thank you. God bless you. And just in the few seconds that we have left, uh, like some of them expressed, there is a lot of fear, concern, and, um, I think we all can do a little bit of, uh, to help the community, knowing that, uh, the Latino community brings a lot of good things, a lot of work, is part of the workforce. And at this point in time, uh, I understand that it's a little over 20% of our citizens, so please take it into consideration, okay? God bless.
Thank you very much. Very important message.
Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Jose Manuel Lopez, followed by Yolanda Amaya. That was everybody. That's okay. How about Betty Bishop? Followed by Eddie Lorton.
Good morning, Mayor Sheehy and council members. I'm Betty Bishop, and I'm here to talk about the hiring of the city manager. I think this is a very important job, and of course, I know that you've looked at qualities that a good manager should have, such as, um, being very ethical, having good intelligence and communication skills, communication where a person can take very complex issues involving city government and being able to explain it, not only for you but for the public. But, um, I am concerned about the surveys and the, um, the reports the consultants have given to you about our city and the homeless issue. So I really invoke the, the council to hire a manager that has a good background in the social services areas, because I certainly see that, from my volunteer work, something is amiss in Reno. We have good social service agencies. I'm not complaining about it. The way that they interact with each other to provide the wraparound services, there's something terribly wrong, and we need to improve that. So I hope that when you're looking at hiring a city manager, that you look at that, what qualities does a city manager have, what background experiences? Because I think this is vitally important if we want to address the issue of homelessness. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, our last public comment is from Eddie Lorton.
Hi, Ms. Mayor, City Council. How are you today? Well, I want to address a couple of things where the folks here earlier were addressing illegal immigration, to where these aren't new laws. They've been on the books for a long time, and I'm kind of on the opposite side of that coin. Uh, there are legal pathways to be here and enjoy our United States of America. So I don't think we should be a sanctuary city by any means, and then especially if we get our funding cut. So I don't believe we should be a sanctuary city, so enough said on that. And, uh, these are all old laws, too, by the way. And then now today, in regards to the hiring of our city manager, I would hope we would hire somebody with experience and expertise, and we've learned from the past, I hope, and not take the person with 90 days' experience, but this will be on you, so I hope we make a great choice today. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie.
Madam Mayor, we have no further general public comment today.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. All right, at this time, we're going to move on. I would like to get approval of the agenda. May I get a motion? Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. At this time...
Madam Mayor, our next item is the interview of the candidates, and I do have public comment on this item.
All right. Go right ahead, Madam Clerk.
Sam Dineh would like to speak on this item.
Sam Dineh, that's me. Sam D-N-A-Dineh. The, uh, I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. Been many years defending our nation against enemies inside of the border and outside of the border. And after my airline Pan Am was blown out of business by the first 9/11 attack, Pan Am blown out of business, I started coming to these government meetings, and I barely missed a meeting in 25 years. And I'm the, um, the most feared man in the history of Reno when it comes to the Reno media mouses and their lack of integrity, their lack of courage, their lack of anything that is of a positive nature. As I lead into my, my analysis of, I'll give a quick background relative to what I've done. I nominated the, the fire chief over there. You approved him. I nominated the chief of police, Jason Soto. You approved him. I nominated the previous city manager, who actually did a pretty up-and-walking good job until the media mouses were successful in attacking him and driving him off of the dais there. He did, when he came on, and I don't even know the guy, when he, but I was here, I nominated him. He, um, he did, like I said, he did, the, the, the city is less bankrupt than it was when he arrived on the scene. So I'm here, uh, I could go on to the, the dozens of things that I have been the driving force for achieving, but I want to at least spend a little bit of time talking about the issue on hand, uh, appointment, hiring of a new city manager. Now, the person, we have two people here. There they are, right there in the paper. It looked like the, uh, the media mouses who were attacking this woman right off the bat, just like they did the previous city manager, Klinger. The media mouse even sent in their, their worst photographer to get a picture of the young lady. Uh, I've met her out front there just briefly, and I would not even know that was her in the picture. It is, nice smiley face there. Yeah, anyway, uh, pictures are very, really important. People don't even know, nine out of 10 people in this city don't even know what that's all about. They just look at it and say, which one looks like the prettiest person, and that's how they go for it. But I'm here, I'm here to say, they both have wonderful resumes, uh, and I'm sure they could both do a pretty good job. But I'm telling you right now, I've got to take my stance. And I'm taking my stance, and I'm putting my, my money where my mouth is. This old frayed $100 bill right here, sitting right, yeah, everybody looked up, the frayed old $100 bill. Anybody want to take me up on this? I, I, there's only one way that I can really decide which of these two people to choose, and it is very easy, easy choice. The fact that the media mouses hate that woman, hate that woman, putting in there with dysfunctionality and all those nasty terms, they do not like, or just like they did not like Jason Soto. So I'm vetting anybody, and I demand that you follow Colonel Sam Dineh's directive and hire that woman. Nothing against that man, but hire that woman.
Madam Mayor, I have no further public comment on this item.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dineh.
You're welcome.
All right, moving forward. At this time, Kelly Lerman will outline the process of questions and interviews of the candidates. Uh, Mr. Nelson, do you want to join Ms. Lerman?
Mayor and council, we're here at the end of the recruitment. We are, have two finalist candidates that are both very well-qualified and looking forward to the rest of the process today. Uh, I understand you have already assigned questions for the interviews, and so when you're ready, we can bring the first candidate, Ms. Sabra Newby, in for her interview.
All right, and just to confirm the process, this will be about an hour long?
One hour per candidate.
And then after that, we will take, per candidate, correct?
Yes.
And then we will take, um, a short 10-minute recess and come back for the next candidate.
Absolutely.
Sound good?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so first up, we have Ms. Sabra Smith Newby.
Point aborted. Does that mean the new meeting is going to be late?
That's going to be, yeah.
Yeah, yes. We, I will cut off the questions, though, at an hour, so we don't run over, so we can stay on time. Ms. Lerman, would you like to say anything at all? No, you're good. All right. All right, thank you very much. All right, good morning. Thank you for being with us today. Okay, I'm going to start off with question one, and then we will move along through council with several other questions. So at this time, um, after reflecting on the first round of interviews, are there any areas that you would like to expand upon or interject? I know sometimes when we're, um, sort of going through the process in our head, there are things that we said, oh, I left that out, or I should have, um, let the council know some experience or something that you would like to bring back to us. So go right ahead.
Sure, thank you. Uh, well, first of all, good morning, Mayor and Council, and thank you for having me back in this last event of what I like to call the City Manager Decathlon. Um, I, I met Mr. Sam Dineh this morning, and, uh, and he told me that I look much more attractive in person than I did in the photo and the newspaper, so I think it's impossible to have a bad day after that, right? So, yes, there are a couple of things. First of all, I, I wanted to talk a little bit about my, um, about my experience as it relates to municipalities and, and kind of expand on that, and, and my, my passion for municipal services. I began my work in local government management with the city of Las Vegas in a department known as Neighborhood Services then. It's since morphed into different departments. But it was a very neighborhood-based, a very municipal services-based department, and, um, that's really where I cut my teeth and, and really grew. They provided code enforcement, affordable housing, uh, they had a rapid-response team, which responded to weeds and issues in, in the right-of-way and on, uh, and sometimes on private property. And they had neighborhood planners that worked with the, with the neighborhood groups in, in planning. And it was really something that I enjoyed there, um, and even moving on into the county, I still, um, have a, a passion for that, and that's why I continued with administrative services at the county, still providing the code enforcement, the animal control, the graffiti abatement, very municipal services. And I know I talked a little bit about scale in terms of Clark County in our last, um, meeting, but, um, just to reemphasize, Clark County, unincorporated Clark County, if it were a city, would be the largest in the state. It is 980,000 people. Our municipal, that would be our municipal area. Of course, the, uh, the county-wide population is over 2.2 million. I'm very active in ICMA, which is our, our professional group for city managers. And every time I go and meet lots of city managers, it's great to, to hear about their experiences in cities across, across the country. And, but sometimes I meet city managers and, you know, I hear about their experiences, and, and then I learn, well, they have a city of, you know, 100 people. Now, these people have all been, you know, city managers, right? They, they have run a city. But I would take my experience in providing municipal services and county-wide services and stack it up to theirs any day, even though I haven't had that title of, of city manager. Um, I've seen some of the hairiest, um, employment actions. Uh, I have seven commissioners with very strong personalities, um, and I've dealt with them, uh, fairly and easily, and we have a great relationship, and I think that's the mark of a, of a good public administrator. So that's point number one. Point number two, I wanted to talk a little bit more about, um, about downtown redevelopment. Uh, I was, one thing that I forgot to mention is that, um, Southern Nevada received a, a planning grant from HUD several years ago, and we called it Southern Nevada Strong. It was $3.5 million from HUD to do this planning process that involved hundreds of outreach meetings, thousands of, of, um, surveys returned to us. I was on the consortium committee. I was designated by Clark County to sit on that. And we looked at lots of different things, from planning aspects, affordable housing, making multimodal transportation come to where the employment and the, um, the housing centers were. And in fact, out of that, there were a number of areas that were identified as sort of project sites of, of model sites. And one of those was, um, Maryland Parkway, which in Southern Nevada can run essentially from the airport all the way to downtown, essentially. And so that was the one that was primarily in the county. Another one was the, um, what was called the Medical District, which is actually in the city of Las Vegas, but includes our UMC as part of that. So, so I have been part of, of a large planning, um, process such as that. Um, finally, and, and I didn't mention this, I mentioned it a little bit with respect to Management Academy, but I really wanted to emphasize, um, something that I find very special about our organization and, and one of my responsibilities, and that's a little group of people called the Organizational Development Center at Clark County, and they provide training for all of our Clark County employees. They are the center of that Management Academy that I told you about. They really takes people who are rising stars in their department and builds on their leadership skills. And they're also the center of, um, of another program that's near and dear to me, which is the Citizens Academy, where we take citizens who are interested and who are, um, activists in their community, and we bring them in for a set of, of meetings and training sessions, each one hosted by one of the commissioners. And we talk about all the different things that we do. I find those really special. Um, it's something I'm very proud of. I think building, um, human capacity is one of the great things about government. You can do it internally and externally as well, and, and I just wanted to point that out because I, I just think it's so special.
All right, great. Now I'm going to send it down to Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, uh, question for you is, please tell the city council which attribute you possess which attribute you possess that will most benefit Reno. In other words, what is the best tool in your city manager's toolbox? And why will it lead to your success in Reno?
I think that my best attribute as it relates to this job would be that I am very driven. And I think that that would be the number one word to describe me. I think that you, you probably have seen that, right? I've, in preparing for the decathlon, I've talked to lots of people. I've prepared, I've read, I've researched, I've done my homework. Failure is, is not an option for me. I don't, I don't engage in any activity that I don't expect to be successful at. And I throw whatever I have at it to, to make sure that, that I am successful. So it's just, it's something that I think was ingrained in me, the work ethic and, and the determination. I think it's just something that, that I bring to the table that, that really defines who I am. And I think you'll, you probably see that in me, me, as like, sometimes it comes off as being very serious. And, and I can be, but, but it's just that determination that I think will serve the city well.
All right, great, thank you very much. Councilwoman Doerr.
Yeah, thank you. This is a little bit early in the program. Usually this question's towards the end, but you'll hear it a couple times from us, which is, do you have any questions for the council? You've had an opportunity to meet with some of us one-on-one, to meet with the community, to meet with the staff. And I'm sure we've answered a number of questions, but is there, is there anything that you would even like to highlight at this moment, related to that?
You know, I, I have heard from lots of, I really enjoyed the, the interaction with the constituents last night, and I heard from them what some of their major issues are, because obviously, you know, there are issues of concern they brought forward to me as, in the form of a question, well, what are you going to do about this? My, my most important issue. But I'd like to hear from you, what, what is your, what do you think is the most pressing issue for the city of Reno, in your opinion?
Oh, you want me to start?
Go right ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, there are many, many pressing issues, and of course, you know, mending relations and building our staff, you know, forming a cohesive unit is very important to me. You said one of your biggest attributes is being driven or focused. I thought maybe you might mention, you know, listening, because listening is, you know, very important, obviously, to gather information and to act upon. So I guess one question I would have for you is, how would you describe your listening skills?
I think that I, I started off my presentation last time with that cheesy quote about having two ears and one mouth in order to listen more than you speak. And, and I think that that's more of my style. I, I like to listen and take it all in, and I like to engage people as well. I think that part of active listening isn't just sitting there passively, but also engaging people in a group. One of the things that I like to do in a group is, and I, I learned this from leadership classes back at Harvard, it's, it's really engaging and knowing, you know, there are certain people who are going to be speaking up in, in a group, right? That have very loud voices. But oftentimes, it's the folks that aren't speaking up, that have something to say, and engaging those people and drawing out those comments. Because listening isn't just listening to the loudest voice or the most talkative voice in the group. I, I know from experience, I'm often not that person myself, you know? But it's also engaging everyone to get those voices heard, whether that be in, in a group setting or in a larger community where there are voices that aren't engaged on a regular basis from parts of the community that need to be engaged and have something to say, but maybe traditionally haven't felt that they were reached out to and engaged in the public dialogue.
I really appreciate that. I mean, I could have given you a laundry list to answer your question, which was, what's our top priorities? And I, we have a good strategic plan that covers some of those things. You heard some of them last night, about homelessness, about blight, you know, about working with the community, about sustainability. You know, each group brought, how are you going to manage development projects? But I really appreciate, you know, your commentary on your listening skills. Thank you. Any other council members have any questions at this time? Okay, moving on to the next question. If the city council prescribed a course of action that you disagreed with, how would you react, and what would your course of action be?
Well, this goes to sort of, this question goes to sort of a core belief in, in me and in public management, I believe. I don't, I don't put myself out there for, for people to vote for. I don't knock on doors. I don't, there's a certain, there's a certain bravery that you have to have to put yourself out there as elected officials, right? And be, and be vulnerable to the citizens. I don't do that. I'm, I'm not elected. No one votes for me, except for possibly you. And so my job is to advise you the best I can and to provide you the most complete information I can to manage the staff in the best way I can and to get you all of that information that you need to make a decision. I may tell you what I think is the best choice at some point. You may not like that direction. You may not like my advice. I may have to give you bad news at some point that you're not going to like. But that's my job. In turn, it's your job to make the decision that the voters put you in that chair to make. That's not me. And so we have, we have a common goal of pushing the city forward, but we have different roles in that. Mine is to advise you and give you the information, and yours is to ultimately make a decision. And sometimes, the Board of County Commissioners doesn't go in a direction that I think is prudent. But they were elected, and I was not, right? I am, I am their manager. I am their assistant county manager. I'm there to advise them. And once they make a decision, then I go forward and I implement, regardless of how I feel about it.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How have you dealt with opposing interests of policymakers? How do you attempt to guide and facilitate discussion, yet remaining apolitical? You kind of dove into that already, but...
Right, so I think one of the, one of the things that I really pride myself on is being able to, to bring together different groups that have differing opinions and try and get to a path forward between them. And so that means really looking for commonality in where, what they're talking about. There may be public policy issues where there are two groups that are at loggerheads, but I try and understand where they're coming from and try and understand maybe what they're saying and what the, say, if it's an ordinance or something, the words are different, but maybe they have a common goal. Let's try and figure that out and see if we can bring the groups together to go forward on that common goal. I, I believe, and I think that it is imperative, it's also one of the ethical tenets of ICMA organization that I ascribe to as a credentialed manager, that we are apolitical. And so I, I stay out of that entirely, out of that realm entirely. I, I don't, I look for good policy, and I look for consensus, and I look for community input, and I look for engagement, both among the elected officials, the employees, and the community. And I think when we can get that and get to an answer, that is ultimately good policy.
As a follow-up question to mine, can you give an example of where you seek consensus on a contentious issue?
Yes, let's see. I think one of the most contentious issues that we have had at Clark County involves animals. And I, I've always been kind of taken aback, right? Because Clark County, 38 different departments, you know, touches the lives of so many people. We, we have, in social services, people who go and administer to elderly people that are, are stuck in their homes. They provide assistance to them for grocery shopping and such. We administer child protective services for abused and neglected kids. All of those issues, when they come before the board on some issue, no one shows up, right? But when an animal issue comes up, it's filled, right, to the gills with lots of different organizations, and it is very contentious. So a couple of years ago, we had a, we had a situation where the contract for our local service provider for shelter services was up. And the community, including a number of different organizations, were very unhappy about the rate of euthanasia in the community. And so we went through very long and contentious discussions in a public forum. We, but we sat down with those groups. We called them all together to try and understand where they were coming from and, and try and get to a path forward. You can't just say, oh, tomorrow, we're not going to euthanize any animals. It's bad for the animals to overcrowd, and we just don't have the capacity. So from doing that, we got the agreement from our provider that they were going to move forward to a no-kill society for us. And we agreed that we would partner with them in that. And we've done that going forward in funding improvements to their shelter and also to their Community CAT program, which has been really helpful. They came forward with a mission Possible 2020 Plan to be free of euthanasia by 2020. And so since then, I think a lot of the groups that were very concerned have been happier. They, they seem to be happy with the direction that it's going in. They're very happy with our Community CAT program. We were lucky to receive a large grant to do that from Best Friends Animal Society. And so that's really helped us. I think coming together in that way helped us be more attractive to those grant funders, because we could say this really is a groundswell of support for this.
All right, great. Councilwoman Bobzian, I know that your question might be repetitive, so if you...
I was going to say, this is a tough one. Do you have another question for the city council?
Do I have another question? All right. On that subject of the regional plan, I understand that, or, sorry, the strategic plan, I understand that you recently adopted a strategic plan. How do you see, or how, how do you want or see that operationalized to make actionable steps forward?
That is a good question, and it strikes me, speaking as one council member, that it's time to revisit that strategic plan, I think, both at the council level and at the staff level, to kind of see where we are on it. I would guess that many of the tenants and assumptions are, are the same, but I think there's been enough time and enough distance on the adoption of that plan that wasn't the smoothest, I would say, offering my own critique. So I, I think step one is actually revisiting it, I would offer. And maybe not from the standpoint of, oh, we, we need to redo it or update it, but just kind of sitting down and looking at it with fresh eyes, maybe even doing a council presentation. And then ultimately, looking at all of the priorities and looking at the budget and making sure that it links up. I mean, that is, it's a straightforward exercise, but it's a very important one, and I think it's, it's one that we are, we are ripe to do immediately following the hiring of, of a new manager.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan.
Thank you. And to just follow up on that, and you and I discussed briefly this yesterday. You know, I, I think this council has identified its strategic priorities, which we always go back to and we could, you know, modify at some point. We, we do have a vision. I think what we've been lacking is someone with a very defined and strong path and, and all things that we do tying back into those strategic priorities, so that we are not, I call it the spin cycle. We are not off on the spin cycle, and we are allowing our staff to achieve the strategic priorities that we have outlined in a very defined way. So at the end of the year, or whatever the timeframe may be, we can look back and say, these were our strategic priorities, and this is what we have achieved by being not so scattered. I guess is the, is what I would see as something that we need a strong leader to help us in staying on track with those strategic priorities.
And Madam Mayor, follow up.
All right.
Very briefly.
Councilwoman Doerr.
Yeah, just, and just to put kind of a punctuation mark, I think that was very well said. You know, we need a report card, we need metrics. We need to understand where we have been, where, where we have progressed to and where we're going. I mean, some kind of report-back mechanism, so we can keep track of our strategic plan and know where we are, that we're getting it done.
Fantastic.
And Madam Mayor, just to close, close it out. We, we need someone to help us not chase squirrels.
There you go. All right, thank you very much. Councilwoman Brekis.
Well, I have the next question, but I wanted to add to that also. I think we need, you know, we're only accountable to the voters every four years up here. We do have the authority to self-regulate one another as a, as a group, but we need a strong manager, a firm manager, who can work within the confines of the budget we set, the policies we set, and look to, when ideas come, and we've got a lot of great ideas out here, a lot of great passion, say, if we go down this one, it's a little one off of where you said you wanted to go, so something else has to go away. And I think that everyone needs to be treated equally on that. And I think that we, we need that self-policing that sometimes we're lacking on ourselves as a body.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Great feedback from the council. I appreciate that.
All right, I'm going to keep it back at you, Councilwoman Brekis.
Okay, I have question number seven here. That is, describe a time when you were involved in an organizational change effort. What was your approach? What were the challenging aspects? What was the outcome?
Let's see. I'm actually, I, I talked about this with some folks last night. I, as part of Administrative Services, I directed emergency management for several years. And it was, it was well-run. We, we got a very good amount of grants. We worked with lots of other jurisdictions in the area. And we had great buy-in, both from the state and Metro, Fire. All of that went well. But I believed then, as I do now, that the place for that function of emergency management really was within the Fire Department. For years, it had been under the county manager, and because of that, it was my responsibility. But, but I believed that because of the involvement from the chief and in the state board, and because so many of the functions fell under that, the fire auspices, and public works, obviously, but mainly Fire, I made the recommendation that it be moved to Fire, just because I believe that that was a better place for it. I have never been one of those people that's been an empire builder. I believe that, that we should follow good policy. And, and so I presented that idea and that thought to the city, or, sorry, the county manager, and they agreed. Some of the issues with that, of course, were just the, the change for the employees, right? I was moving their cheese. And that was something that was, was scary to them. Also, going over to the Fire Department, they have, they have a very strong culture there, right? And, and here you have this group of, of folks who are very well, very highly educated and specialists in their area, and really kind of comfortable where they were on the sixth floor with the rest of county management. Going out to Fire, there was a feeling among them that, that maybe they were being sent out, you know, into the hinterlands and that they're, that, that they wouldn't fit in among all of the Fire personnel that were there. And so as part of that process, and it also included some personnel changes within that group, I think what was successful for me was... I think what was successful for me was really just engaging those fears in the employees and, um, and having open and honest conversations and hearing them out about what their, their concerns were. But also, working very closely with the fire department and the chief at the time, um, to, to talk about this group and, and how special they were and how tight-knit, um, they were. And in making that transition, I, I think it went smoothly because there was so much communication on both ends. Um, the, you know, transferring the grants within the county system was a little bit more rocky, but, um, but that's more of a, of a technical change, you know, than, than the personnel change. But that, I think, is one organizational change that I directed, um, that, that I think went smoothly because of that engagement.
All right. Great. Also, great book, if anyone's ever read it, Who's Who Moved My Cheese is a great management book. Fantastic. All right, Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next question is, as the policymakers, we're interested in having various options and alternatives presented in staff reports along with the fiscal impact and the recommended course of action. In other words, we want to see the full range of scenarios, including the pros and cons. How will you ensure we receive all the information to make an informed decision and that the completed staff work is of the highest quality?
So, as, as part of this process, I've had, um, an opportunity to engage with some of your senior management. And, um, and I've found them to be very dedicated and hard-working folks. Um, and I think that, that, um, at least from the outside looking in, um, that, that you're very strong in, in your staff. Now, I agree that you need to have various policy, um, options. And one of the things that I think I spoke with you, um, individually about is the role that I intend to take with respect to your, um, your agendas and your, uh, the items that come before you to make sure that all of the information is complete and accurate. Um, we, I think as staff, need to take it on ourselves. And, um, in, at Clark County, the way that we do that is among our senior management staff, we get together and re-review all of the items going before the board. And we check each other, you know? It's, it's kind of like, uh, like a team of rivals sort of, um, setup, where we're encouraged to really bring up, well, what about this? What about that? Have you thought about this other option? I don't think that's gonna work. Um, do you, you know? And so, we check each other. And I would expect that feedback from the staff and that team to be built going forward. I think that the intellect is there, I think that the subject matter expertise is there. It's really just teasing that out. Now, there may be times when we, uh, put together a recommendation for you or a series of options for you, and you've thought of something entirely different that we haven't or some aspect, um, that we haven't. I expect to hear that. And I expect when we get that feedback, that we go back and we revise things for you and look into whatever you've brought up, um, in a, in a deeper way so that we can bring that to you forward. That's the way, um, I see it going forward. I think that as staff, um, you need to have options. Again, um, it's not our place, staff's place, to make the decisions. Um, our place is to provide you with the information you need to make decisions.
Great. Great. Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah, thanks. Um, we talked about this a little bit yesterday, but I'm wondering if you could walk us through an agenda approval process that you feel works best, including communicating with elected officials and department directors as part of your preparation? You, you know, we're starting to touch on that a little bit, but could you take us to the next step?
Sure. So, what I talked about, and, and admittedly, I, I don't know exactly how your process goes. Um, but I can talk about what my experience is and, and, um, and I should note that at Clark County, the agenda is put together by the county manager's office. So, just, it's a different tier, I understand that, but just have that frame of mind. So, um, the departments will put together their agenda items and come forward. And we review it beforehand as staff with senior management. That's the meeting that I talked to you about, where we all go over all of the different items. And we actually have someone, um, which I thought was silly in the beginning, but actually makes sense, um, read through every single item, every single recommendation as we're all sitting in the room. Um, and then, at that time, that's where we have the, that, those interactions. And we challenge them, well, what about this? Is there a problem on that? Um, have you thought of this? And so, we have that interaction and, and there are action items that come out of that meeting for us to go back and check and ensure that the item is complete, that the issues are worked out in, in our view, anyway. Then the, the items go forward as the agenda and they're posted to the extent that there are things that, um, have been requested by board members or things that, uh, may be of, is of interest to board members, we kind of give them a heads-up. Hey, next meeting is gonna be the X, Y, Z item or that other issue that you had brought up. Just wanted to let you know. And that's common for me as, as the person who sort of coordinates those requests. At Clark County, I have a very scientific process that's on a blue pad of paper. Um, that I cross off the items as, it's not really scientific, that was a joke. Um, didn't go over very well. But, um, so I, I...
I thought, hmm, that's interesting.
Right, yes, it's not scientific at all. So, um, so I cross those off and, and I'll let the, um, commissioners know, hey, that thing that you wanted, this is when we're gonna schedule it. So, agenda comes out. Uh, we sit down individually or in groups, uh, with the commissioners. Sometimes, the commissioners want an individual briefing, some of them, uh, gel together and they just like the questions that the other one asks. So, sometimes, they group up in, in twos. And so, uh, we sit down, for us, we do it on the Monday before the Tuesday meeting. We go through the agenda individually with them. And, you know, normally, there's like a hundred items. So, uh, we typically pick out those items that are of interest or might be a little bit controversial or have something a little bit different about them. And we point those out to the, um, to the commissioners. Oh, I, I should mani- I should mention that actually, we meet, again, as senior staff before that to pick out those items. We also mention in those individual briefings what, uh, what we think the, um, the issues might be of interest to a particular commissioner. So, um, if there's a park, um, that we're working on for Commissioner Weekly, we'll me- we'll mention that to him. You know, maybe Commissioner Brager wouldn't be interested in that, so we, we don't mention that. And then, we ask them, you know, are there other issues that you have questions on other items? And we take their questions. Inevitably, out of every one of these meetings, there are questions, there are requests for information. Sometimes, there are issues where a commissioner will say, I really have an issue with this. I need more information, this isn't good, I, I'm really concerned. Um, from that point, we, we go out, uh, to the affected departments. And I should mention that some of the department heads are in this briefing with the commissioners. And we try and get that information and we try and work out those issues. If one commissioner has an issue, uh, on another commissioner's item, we try and work that out ahead of time and get the information. Most of the time, we're successful in getting that prior to the meeting. But sometimes, we aren't. And so, when we aren't, we'll usually recommend, if there's a big issue on something, just to hold it for two weeks so we can get that information back and we can address whatever issues are there or maybe try and work out a compromise. Most of the time, that's possible, but sometimes, it isn't. Um, so, then we'll just reschedule that item. We like, um, and I like, this is my preference, for you, again, I, I sound like a broken record, but to have all of the information you need, um, to make the decision. And if you have concerns on something, I want you to have, uh, the ability to air those concerns and either have them addressed, or if they're not gonna be addressed, at least for you to have the information on, on what they are so that you can make that decision.
Well, I think you, you answered that pretty fully. And the, the only part perhaps is just barring that, you know, inevitably, we're gonna have some differences of opinion. Is there, and, and just maybe within a one minute, is there anything that you can do in our meeting process, once this agenda's come forward, to, you know, help us kind of, uh, work through an issue? You know, what would you do to help make our meetings more productive? But, you know, it's only a little bit of, I think, the tail end of what, where you're going.
Right. So, I think once you get into the meeting, if things, uh, and sometimes, it's unavoidable or unforeseen, where an issue is starting to go sideways and it's, there's just a lot of talking, but not a lot of, uh, direction, that's, it doesn't seem like we're heading down a path one way or the other. Um, I think that it's helpful for the city or the county manager, and this is something that I saw my, uh, previous county manager, Don Burnett, was, was excellent at. Um, he, he really guided, uh, and I watched him, you know? If it's looking like it's not, it's not gonna be resolved or there's more information that's needed, he would say, okay, it's looking like this isn't gonna be solved today. Let's move on and hold this for the next two weeks, um, to the next meeting, our next BCC. And let's try and work it out and bring it back to you. Um, I think that that's helpful. Sometimes, you know, we can get sidetracked and, and talk for hours and hours on something and still not come up with an answer. Um, that's, that can be frustrating to the electeds, it can be frustrating for staff. And most of all, it's frustrating for the folks that are in the audience. And they're waiting for an item that they thought was gonna be up and, and they're still there, you know? And so, um, that's what I would do. I would take that sort of strong role that he did, um, to, to try and guide things.
All right, thank you. All right. Vice Mayor Jordan.
Our local business leaders are interested in a city manager with a proven track record of a commitment to sound policies that promote economic development, revitalization, and expansion of our tax base. What can you share with us in this area?
Well, um, one of the areas that I'm responsible for that I think, um, is, is helpful in that area is, uh, purchasing, uh, which is a, for us, for Clark County, a very, um, involved process and something that our commissioners are very interested in. Um, we have a number of things that we have done over the years in terms of policies and procedures that we put in, um, at the direction of the board to try and help, uh, local businesses and help, um, economic development. Um, our board was very interested in supporting local businesses, um, minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, Nevada businesses. And so, we put into a policy, we call it our FD six, which is, uh, Fiscal Directive six, which is our purchasing policies, that certain, there were certain levels of, of spend. So, when a department was looking to spend, um, up to $10,000, they would need a, they would need the three quotes and at least one of them would have to be from, uh, NBE, WBE, or MBE. So, uh, one of the disadvantaged business classifications. And so, as part of that, it really forces our departments to, to get those quotes, to get those folks in the game. Um, they may not win the bid, um, but at least they're participants and, and they have a chance. And we are actively going out to get those, those bids and include them. Um, I'm, I'm happy to say that in 2016, 20% of our discretionary, um, bids, dollar amount, went to those businesses. They're typically smaller, um, and, uh, and sometimes mom and pop or, or, uh, not a whole lot of employees. And I, I think that some of those contracts are really big for those businesses. They're small for us, but they're big for those businesses. So, that's one thing. Another thing that, um, that I've directed is, uh, what we call now the SBOP, which is the Small Business Opportunity Program. Used to be called BAOD, um, which was really, um, uh, a form that the state took on as, as a model. And so, what we do is we accept applications from small businesses who are interested in doing business with Clark County. And, um, and we put them through classes, kind of like a management academy only for businesses. And we teach them about, how do you fill out one of our bid documents? What is the documentation that you're gonna need? And then, we actually partner with lots of, uh, folks from the state and from the university and even from some banks to talk to them, come and talk to them about, how do you access capital? And, uh, what programs at, at the state and at the university are open to you? Um, and some of these things. So, it, it's capped off with a, with a graduation and it's also, they have a fair also, where they're, where they have booths and they can talk about their services. And, um, we call it, uh, we call this event the Meet Your Customer Day. And so, we have the, the, the folks there with their booths and our departmental buyers come down to talk to them about their needs. And I think that's one way that we really engage, uh, that I've been responsible for, really engaging the business community, trying to help, um, in the way that government can, um, spur business and growth in them.
All right. Great. Okay. Fiscal sustainability is very important. How do your executive skills specifically prepare you for dealing with financial and budgetary issues?
So, I've had experience on various levels of, of budgeting throughout my roles, um, in my career. At, um, from, from my perspective in the city of Las Vegas, in the Neighborhood Services Department, I was responsible for putting together their, their budget, um, for their department. So, at the most granular level, the bottom level, um, responsibility for putting together that budget. Um, moving on to the county, uh, as a department director, I was also responsible for overseeing the budget, obviously. At Clark County, we have, um, finance analysts that are responsible, that are assigned to various departments. And so, I shared that finance analyst with others, but, uh, worked closely with them on the department budget and overseeing spend. Um, in my current role as Assistant County Manager, of course, I have various departments that report up to me. And so, I, I oversee their budgets as well. In conjunction, obviously, the department director is the closest to it. But, um, and to the extent that there are any issues with expenditures or any changes that they wish to make, I, um, I also work with them on that. As a part of senior management for Clark County, I, in this sort of other hat on the same role, um, I am also, um, as part of that, in those discussions about the budget. Uh, how much, you know, what are the forecasts that we're getting? What are the spends? I work with the departments on what we call our, um, our ex- our expanded or supplemental budgets, which are additional positions that people want to add. And so, we have those discussions of where, where is C-Tax going? What does our property tax look like this year? How many positions can we allow each department to put forward? And then, ultimately, when we make the, the budget, we sit down in that sort of team of rivals group and we fight it out among the, uh, the different, uh, areas of concern and, and different position requests and funding requests. So, I'm also a part of that. I also, we have at Clark County what we call a Position Review Committee, which reviews all of the positions that are open for fill. And, um, as part of that, we again engage each other on each position that comes open, any of them that are gonna be re-classed or changed into different functions. And, um, we also require that all of those departments recoup their costs for their buyout for each of those positions before they fill it. Departments don't always like that, but, um, it's the way that we keep fiscally sound on, um, our employee costs. So, I think those are the, the various ways that I'm engaged in, uh, fiscal management and budget.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, what underlying, underlying values and principles guide your judgment and decision-making? Give us an example of your actual situation where your values and principles play a role.
Um, as, as a public manager and as a member of ICMA, um, and, and a proud, um, public servant, I think, um, my ethics are front and center and guide what I do. Um, I intend to do this for a career, I have done it for a career. Um, so, my reputation and my, um, my ability to be trusted, I think, is, is paramount. And that's something that, that comes naturally to me, but it's also something that I think, um, is reinforced in, in lobbying and in working with elected officials. Um, so, ethics, doing the right thing, I think, is, is, is my guiding principle. But also, um, engaging, and I'll come back to ethics, but also engaging, um, employees, some of the... of the things I talked about in the first interview, innovation, open and accessible government, excellence, accountability, some of those things are also very important to me. But it, I think what your question gets to is, is specifically your, sort of your ethical compass, right? Without sharing a whole lot of detail, I think that there, there have been times in my career where there have been actions taken in code enforcement and other type of enforcement situations, on a property that may be owned by someone who is very close to an elected official. And I have been asked in the past to make changes on how those enforcement actions are done. And I have also been, some of those hairy issues that I talked about in employment issues, where an elected official has, has done something not, not ethical, either with the employees, or to the employees, or about the employees, I have had to take action and tell an elected official, "No." It's not comfortable, I'll tell you that, but it has to be done. And at the end of the day, again, all you have is your word, all right? And your ethics in, in life, I think, and in your career. And I, I would rather not have the job than work in, in a situation where I wasn't comfortable with my own ethics.
All right, great. Councilwoman Bobzian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Guess this is appropriate for the at-large member to ask. Quality of life issues or frequent comments heard in our community. How will you, as a city manager, assist the city council in addressing individual council ward priorities?
Well, I think that goes back to the discussion about your strategic plan and where, where you want to see the city go. I think that there are, i- in local government, all politics is local, right? And, and I understand very, very much from my time at the city and even my county, my county work, that, that there are areas of the city and our county that are in need of, of assistance. I think that it's absolutely appropriate at times to, to focus, and I talked a little bit about this in the first interview, to focus energy on a particular area. I talked about the C-Mart group, where we bring together all of, you know, the business license and code enforcement, fire, police, to address issues. But I, I think that that has to be a balance, right? Between that and stretching staff so thin on various projects, sort of scattered, right? And so I think that, that really what we need to do is look back at the strategic plan or, or whatever its new incarnation may be, and guide those principles. If, if more activity and more emphasis in, at a very neighborhood level is something that the council wants, then I think that we need to make a concerted effort to move in that direction and build capacity. Because what I've heard so far, just as feedback, is that there may not be the capacity to do all of the things that are desired to be done. And a city is like a person, right? There are only so many things that you can devote your time and energy to before you're not doing everything so great, you know?
All right. Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah. Let's see. Oh, follow-up questions. I, I do have a few. I just briefly like to ask both, both of the candidates, and for brevity's sake, two of these are yes, just yes/no. What is your, first one is, and it's expand upon, please expand upon your personal experience with the processing of new master plan, community approvals.
So my, as part of what I do, I oversee the, the neighborhood, the, what you call NABs, we call tabs, and CACs, Town Advisory Boards, and Citizens Advisory Councils, depending on the area. And so, many of those plans and applications as well, both the comprehensive planning and current planning go before those boards. So we oversee that process and the input that goes through them. So we coordinate with our comprehensive planning department to bring that through, collect that information, and provide it back to our board and to comprehensive planning.
Okay. The other ones are related to our contract, which I think you've seen a copy of. Our charter does not require a Reno residency provision, but we've had issues with two recent city managers not residing within the city of Reno. Is a residency within the city of Reno a problem for you? Yes or no?
I don't know that it is, to be honest with you. I, I haven't really gone down the road of where to live. I'd prefer to get the job first, which...
What about severance? Have you looked at our severance provisions, and do you have a need for severance?
In the Reno City Charter.
In the contract?
In the contract. Yes, I was provided a copy of, of a draft contract by the, by the recruiter.
Okay. And conflicts of interest, do you have any? Or do you foresee any personal conflicts of interest that you would have in doing this job?
I don't foresee any personal conflicts of interests, but again, should anything happen or arise where, where there's a perceived conflict of interest, I would take direction from the city attorney, disclose, remove myself, whatever's required to address it, should it arise.
My final question is related to ICMA ethic guidelines, which I, I understand you're familiar with. In general, I think it's Tenet Four states that two years of service is required to fulfill your obligation to an employer. Your current position with Clark County, which is the qualifying position of Assistant County Manager, to qualify for this job, is less than two years. It's, it's four months or so. The guidelines say sometimes there's, you know, reasonable, rational, you know, reasons for not fulfilling this two-year obligation, but it should be the exception. What, are you, how do you view that?
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up since you've had several questions.
This is my final question, Mayor.
Well, this, I want to make sure that we also have enough time for closing remarks.
Okay, okay. And, and you know, if you want to put three minutes on these, that's, that's fine.
No, it's fine.
So go ahead.
We actually discussed this yesterday, and the, the change to Assistant County Manager was a title change. I've been in the same role since 2013.
Okay.
There's, under the city, under the county manager, the city-county thing is starting to mess me up here, but under the county manager, there are Assistant County Managers, there's a Chief Administrative Officer, and a CFO. My current city manager was the CFO, the city, the county manager before that was the CAO. My title had been CAO, it's an Assistant City Manager, County Manager function. But what the job title actually really points to is having all of those internal functions. And while I do have some of those, like IT and aspects of administrative services are internal functions, I also was overseeing external functions as well. And so some of those things are like social services, elections, those things. And so when the new county manager came on, she believed that it was just a more appropriate title because of my assignments. But the, but the function hasn't changed, I'm still, what we call the schedule, it's the same level, it's still the same function. So I've been in that since 2013.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this time, Councilwoman Bobzian, did you want to, you're fine? Okay. All right, I'm actually going to ask you to come back with the closing remarks, because we're about four minutes away, so the floor is all yours.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you again for having me. I am truly appreciative of the opportunity to come before you. I have spent a lot of time in Reno recently and talking with Reno residents, and even though for an introvert like me, last night's, you know, interaction with all of those citizens was kind of daunting, I really enjoyed it. And I was really touched that there were so many residents that came out with their specific questions that they wanted to ask, and, and without exception, they were all delightful people, and, and asked some hard questions too. I mean, these were not softballs. And so I, I've really appreciated it, and the thoughts that I've had about Reno in the beginning have only strengthened through this process. So even though I like to joke that it's a city manager decathlon, I, I've, I'm appreciative to having gone through it. In closing, I think you, you know all about me. I, I like to think that I can hit the ground running. We talked about my work ethic, I'm dedicated, I'm driven. I think that I will work my heart out for you, and I will use those connections that I already have in order to really hit the ground running and bring together this region, ideally. I think that this is an amazing opportunity. Your staff really want to work well for you, they want to move forward. I've really been impressed with them, having met them, and, and I feel like we've already gelled. I'd really like to, to be that leader and that, that manager that I think that you need, so.
All right. Thank you very much, and you've been a tremendous sport, if it is a decathlon, for sure. So, all right. Thank you very much. All right, we are going to take a 10-minute recess, and we will bring Mr. Scott in.
I think we're fine, and we took off.
Madam Clerk, you ready? All right, welcome back, everyone. Okay, at this time, I am going to call up Mr. Marcus Scott.
Okay. I hope you've been forewarned I'm about to make a dramatic statement, so forgive my drama here. But I do have a couple of things I want to say to the group. And I want to start off by thanking you for allowing me this opportunity to be a finalist in this terrific city. I truly am honored to have had the chance to do this. Unfortunately for me, the message that I want to give today is that I think you've already met your next city manager, and it is she. I am a... The best part of this process for me so far has been meeting Sabra Newby. I think that she is just a... One of the bright future stars of this profession. And I'm honored to have gone through this process with her. But at this point, I'm going to drop out of the process and I'm going to let you make your choice without my consideration. One of my complaints about your, and I say "your" meaning Nevada's very public process, is that it lends itself to a final selection decision that is potentially damaging to the credibility of your successful candidate, let alone the unsuccessful candidate. This is a tough job you're filling. Being a city manager in a city with the issues you've got is a very tough job. You should want to put that city manager into office with as close to a unanimous vote as you can get. And it matters. It matters to do that. And you ought to want to give that manager a contract that says to the public and says to the staff that this is somebody we really believe in. This is somebody we're behind and we're going to support going into the future. No one should ever take a city manager job on a four-to-three vote. I know I never would. And I can't let you make a decision today that would do that because I wouldn't want to put you in a position of having somebody that was chosen say no. And I don't think that's good for anybody's process. I want you to know, though, I'm not reluctant to end up the loser in this decision. That's not what this is all about. I suspect I am, actually. And I could have phoned this in. If I were concerned about the humiliation of the moment, I could have phoned this in. But I didn't do that. I wanted to come here and talk to you myself because I think it's the right thing to do. But, you know, this is a two-way process. The selection of a city manager is a two-way process. I don't believe that I've really sold myself to you. And I don't... And I know that I haven't been sold on the job myself. I'm sold on Reno. I don't have a problem with Reno. Reno's a terrific place. But I'm not sold that I'm the right guy for this job. And I'm not sold that the relationship is there yet for you to be making that final decision if it affected me. The decision's not about resumes. It's not about my vision. It's about how well a city manager can be a leader with the council, a leader with the staff, and ultimately, a voice in the community. Maybe I could be that person, but on the day of your decision, I'm not there yet. I don't feel it, and I'm not there yet. And so I have to, at this point, ask for your understanding as I withdraw from further consideration. And I hope that you will feel as positive as I do about Ms. Newby. As I said, I think she's a terrific, terrific candidate. When I was appointed city manager in Beverly Hills, I was 40 years old, and I wasn't very experienced. The city council got behind me in a way that made my career. They saw to it that I got the support that I needed. They saw to it I got the mentoring that I needed. They stated to the staff, both in their words and their actions, that they believed in me as their manager. I stayed another 14 years, and I've had a career based on the success I had in that first job. I truly believe you have that opportunity right now with the candidate you've got for this position. I look forward to watching what happens in this city. I look forward to hearing about your successes, and I know you're going to have them. And I will tell you that if you ever want anything from me, my consulting fee for the city of Reno is zero. Let me know what I can do. Thank you for the honor of including me in your process. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Scott, first of all, I want to say thank you very much for being so forthcoming and your integrity and being so honest with this council. It's very much appreciated, and certainly, I'm sure it wasn't easy.
No.
Because I know you wouldn't have come this far. But I also want to commend you for being so incredibly gracious to Ms. Newby. You both have shown that you're both leaders. And so I just want you to know that I commend you immensely. And I think San Bernardino is in good hands.
It is, and thank you for saying that.
And you've proven that you've had a lot of success. So I'm very grateful for you taking the time out of your busy schedule and life in San Bernardino and your wife. And it's also been... It's been a great experience getting to know you better. I know this process has not been easy at all. I want to thank certainly Mr. Nelson and Mrs. Lehrman. I mean, you guys put a lot of time and energy. The HR staff did an amazing job. And again, I can imagine how difficult it is to make it so incredibly public. I had a lot of nice compliments coming to my office about you, and I think it speaks volumes to who you are.
Thank you. There have been some nice people that said some encouraging things to me this morning, and I took the compliments without telling them what I was about to do. I apologize to those people, but you had to hear first, so.
Well, thank you very, very much.
Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you very much. All right. Well, I was going to ask our city attorney if there's any direction, or can we just... Motion?
Yes, at this time, I'd recommend a motion.
All right, thank you very much. So before we begin, we will make a motion, and then we will bring it back and start our next meeting. So I want everyone to know we will probably pretty much start on time at the noon hour, okay? Do you want to take a five-minute break after that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we will take a five-minute break. I also want to start off by thanking the city of Reno staff and Mr. Bill Thomas for leading us in this transition stage. I think everyone has done a tremendous job. And it's no secret that we have, I think, one of the best staff in the entire country. They're hardworking, they care, they love the city, and it truly, truly shows. So for me and this entire council, I know that you guys have made us very, very proud. It's not always easy. I mean, you have a very difficult job. I know that. And also, we have a lot of different personalities up here. But I think in the end game, it's for us to be a unified council and be... This is a team sport. Truly is a team sport, right? So we all need one another. So I'm very appreciative. I would like to say I think Ms. Newby can... Certainly with her tenacity and her experience in managing one of the largest counties in the country with a population of over 2 million people, shows that she has the ability to be a leader. I will also like to say I received so much feedback across the state of Nevada about Ms. Newby's character, professionalism, and work ethic. I truly believe she could take this city to the next level. Her extensive background in policy and her homeless initiatives, her attention to detail from code enforcement to planning, really, I think, can tackle some of Reno's largest challenges moving forward. So at this time, I would be honored if she would accept the position to lead the city of Reno into the future.
Is that a motion, Madam Mayor? I'd like to second the motion.
You go ahead, make the motion.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor and City Council, very excited to select and nominate Sarah Newby as our new city manager.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Six seconds.
Oh, go... Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I want to express gratitude to the staff as well and also to the search process and our search recruiter. I know when we started this process, there was a lot of diminished expectations as to the quality of the pool that we were going to have, just given the controversies and the difficulties that we've had at the city. And it has been incredible to see the quality of candidates come forward. And I will say, as someone who voted to have Ms. Newby and Mr. Scott as the finalists, I was grateful that we had such fantastic choices right up until the very end. And I do want to express my appreciation to Mr. Scott for being a part of this process, for really showing us different opportunities in different directions that were possible for our city, and absolutely respect his handling and the decisions that he's made, and the fact that he was here to join us and communicate that in person. I think that speaks volumes as to his professionalism and to his ethic as a manager. You know, a lot of my recollection of working with Sabra Smith-Newby has come back to me in memory throughout this process because I don't know her well. But I will say that my freshman session in the legislature was her first time in Carson City on behalf of Clark County. And, you know, when you're a newly elected legislator, you know, you often think you're the smartest kid in the room, and you quickly realize that you're not. And I learned very quickly, anytime I was in a meeting with Sabra Smith-Newby, that she was the smartest kid in the room. But the wonderful thing about it was that she was the last person to make you think she was the smartest kid in the room. And that balance of capability, intelligence, and humility, I think, is a wonderful combination that's going to serve this city, our dedicated staff, and all the residents very well in the future. I mean, you certainly think about the mentors that she's had in her career. She mentions Don Burnett, I think, of Virginia Valentine. I mean, these are giants in public service for this state. And in a lot of ways, the balance of the fact that she is a homegrown Nevada girl, coupled with the fact that she's not Reno, she's coming from the outside, she's bringing us fresh perspectives, I think, is also very powerful. And I did appreciate what came up in her interview today, the reference to Team of Rivals. So the Doris Kearns-Goodwin book about how Abraham Lincoln brought together his competing advisors into a cabinet and how he manages that, I think also speaks to where I think she's going as a manager, taking the approach of radical candor, which is an idea that you're going to hear a lot about in popular culture right now as a management style. When we look at the challenges that we have of staff morale and we think of the dedicated staff that we have, the very capable staff, that are looking for an experienced, compassionate, and consummate professional as a manager, I think Sabra is exactly that person that's going to take us into the future. I also appreciated the very frank responses she had about her experiences dealing with ethical quandaries. It's no secret that that is something that needs to be at the top of the list for a manager, and her ability to work through those challenges and her experience doing so, I think, is going to serve us very well. So, Madam Mayor, that's my long-winded way of saying I enthusiastically support this motion.
I think it was very eloquently said, Councilman. Nice job. Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just real quick, I just wanted to add my appreciation for Mr. Scott staying here instead of taking the easy way out, staying here, actually explaining to us his reasoning behind what's running from the candidacy. And that's... It's been a long, long road that he's been traveling, and I know that there's been some discourse in San Bernardino over this process that he's going to have to go back and quell, and it's not an easy thing for a person to do. It raises my level of respect for the gentleman considerable. And I appreciate his notion that this council divided on a city manager candidate is probably the worst thing for the city. And I appreciate that he has enough concern for us that he would not put us in that position. So I truly want to voice my respect and appreciation to Mr. Scott.
Very well said, Councilman. Councilwoman Dorr.
Thank you so much. I have been so impressed with both candidates, and a shout out to the process that we followed for both of the people involved to bring us these two quality candidates. And for me, it was virtually a coin toss when we finished round one. And I was looking forward to this round to sort of discriminate, separate, and have the kind of the cream rise to the top. I have been, through the last 24, 48 hours, whatever we've been at, so impressed with both, but particularly impressed with Sabra Newby and what she would bring to the city. And I just wanted to get that on the record, that she does have a tremendous vote of confidence from me, whether Mr. Scott withdrew or not. I think he did it very graciously. He showed his character by stating how he felt, and I think that is kind of inspirational to me as a councilperson, and it makes a path forward more clear. But I just want to say again that I would be so very excited to be working with Ms. Newby and have her come in as the face of the city. Her energy, her enthusiasm, and her focus and her very direct responses to our questions really inspired me as well, that I think this is a person I will have a good time communicating with and ease of communication. And I will say, too, that I heard support for both from our staff. To me, the top job is bringing our staff together into a functioning unit, which they're functioning now, but they can function even better with some clear direction. So I enthusiastically support her becoming our new manager.
Thank you. Very well said. Vice Mayor Jordan.
Thank you very much. Interesting process from the first go-around, and thank you to you for all your work, Greg, for doing all of this. It's been incredible. Bill, we can't thank you enough. You have been tremendous through some really, really tough stuff. You deserve all the praise in the world. Personally, I thank you for that. Okay, I'll get back on track. But when I met... When we met with both the candidates initially, I went through each of the 13 questions and ranked them 1 through 10. And at the end of the process, my number one and number two were two points away from each other. So it was virtually a coin toss. Having spent 20 years in human resources, I know that the real determination comes when you meet them in person, and you have the one-on-one, and you have a fit in the field. And I have to say, after having some discussions with both of them yesterday, Mr. Scott, incredible. I mean, he's got tremendous background. He's certainly got the skill set. But maybe he... I sensed from him even yesterday that he didn't feel that this was the right fit. And maybe he sensed that I sensed that from him. And I appreciate his very gracious way of handling this here today. But I will say that Ms. Newby knocked my socks off yesterday. She had very specific answers. She had very clear pathways of improving things. And she identified what I believed to be the issues before us and a path to fix them. She wasn't so broad to be safe. She was specific. And I appreciated that, and I... She was specific, and I appreciated that, and I endorse her and look forward to our future together.
Great, nicely done. Councilman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'll pay it back on everything that everyone else has said. But again, appreciate Mr. Scott for his professionalism. Again, I think yesterday really cleared the road for me when I sat down with both candidates, and I was very much appreciated of the candid conversation I had with Mrs. Newby, who I'm looking forward to working with with respect to her knowledge on land use, on growth, and working deeply within our communities, and knowing that there's plenty of issues there, and her great ideas with that. And of course, I'm very excited for our staff. I think our staff across the city and us are looking for leadership that she has, and she's very eager to bring forward. But I think our staff is looking for that leadership, and I think she very much brings that from a municipal perspective. So excited for our staff, excited for us, and thank you.
All right, great. Councilwoman Bruckus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I had not spoken publicly about the process of winnowing the four down to two, other than just the ranking I did, which I had put Mr. Scott first as the four that came before us. You know, I was prepared for this process to listen with an open mind, and excited about the prospect of both, what two different candidates at different points of their career could offer and present to us. And I've, you know, so it kind of went an interesting turn, but I've received numerous endorsements, both written and spoken. I think there was one on the table when we came here today in favor of her candidacy. I have never, not heard a person say one critical thing about her. I think she's a very serious person, and I'll be behind her 100%. And she's going to go home and, you know, think about this challenge, and I think she's going to come back and be our city manager, and I look forward to working with her.
All right, great. Councilwoman Bruckus, really appreciate your positive comments. Thank you very much. All right, I'm actually going to send it to Madam Clerk. Do you have any public comment on city manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Donna Clontz may still be here. She is not here, however.
Oh, she's not here?
She's not here, however, she did indicate support for Ms. Newby for the position. Also, Sam Diney would like to speak on this item.
All right. Mr. Sam Diney, bring it home. Oh. How about I'll have you go right after Sam, Ms. Clontz. It's good?
Oh, no, in a contrary point of order, she goes first because she's speaking on this agenda item.
Oh, are you not speaking on this agenda item?
I already spoke on it.
Okay.
I know that was so long ago, you forgot. But I spoke on it vehemently, adroitly, and in favor of the lady.
All right.
She's on this agenda item here. I'm on the next one.
Thank you, Sam. All right. Ms. Clontz, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I did write a public comment because I wasn't -- none of us knew that this was going to be shortened the way it was. I met both candidates yesterday, and as you know, I'm very involved as an advocate for lots of things, including our seniors here in town. And I was so impressed with Sabra Newby's skills and her ability to really key in on a lot of the things that I think are important for us. The strategic planning, the helping focus, some of the big things that the council wants to get done. Her experience in managing in a big, a bigger system than ours, but still in Nevada, she has a lot of experience with the advocacy role as well, having spent lots and lots of time in Carson City. As advocates ourselves, she knows what it's like to try to persuade elected officials about what they should do. And she's been very gracious and very, very warm and friendly about all of those things. And so I was very impressed with her, and I was going to urge you to hire her, but that's going to happen. So thank you. On behalf of the seniors and those of us in the community that are here talking to you all the time, thanks.
Thank you so much for your hard work. Thank you very much. All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nice. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Sabra Smith-Newby. This is a very, very exciting time for the city of Reno, and I appreciate everyone being here and taking the time with us, and certainly to our city staff. You guys are amazing and tremendous. Thank you very much. We are going to take a five-minute recess, so Madam Clerk can switch over to our next meeting.
Can we finish with public comment in a adjourned item?
Oh, go right ahead.
Thank you.
Sam, you're keeping us on track.
Sam Diney is our general public comment.
You could have had another extra three minutes, too.
Another three minutes? Six minutes? I don't know. I wouldn't want to do anything that anybody else doesn't get.
Take it away, Sam.
I'm only taking my measly three minutes.
Okay.
And I got to get my camera going. Sam Diney, I demand that the media mouses over there tell the truth for once. Sam came into this podium, the only citizen in the community, although I speak for 300,000 people, Sam Diney, Air Force Academy graduate. I came to this podium, the only citizen to speak in favor of that young lady. As a matter of fact, I even put my $100 bill and bet everybody in the audience, she's going to get the job. Nobody wanted to take it. The media mouses over there, insanely afraid of Sam Diney. It is so disgusting, the media mouses. The good news is, I'm finally getting them dismantled. And the media mouses, they're not media mouses, they are a government organization. They would not be in existence if it wasn't for our taxes paying for their newspaper to stay in business. They should have to obey the open meeting law. The media mouses, not that camera guy. Well, yeah, they won't let him play his camera stuff. At any rate, I take, once again, I was the driving force that brought Jason Soto, who's doing a phenomenal job as the chief of police. I was the only person who nominated him. I nominated the fire chief. There he is. I nominated the previous city manager, and he did an up-and-walking good job. He really did, until, nod in his head, until the media mouses over there came down on him. The medium, you know, Donald Trump doesn't like the media mouses, but you know what? The media mouses, I'm more powerful than Donald Trump, because the media mouses out there are not afraid of Donald Trump. They will write him, they will challenge him. The media mouses over there scared in their pantyhose and pants of Sam Diney. So I am the driving force. Not a, I was, am the driving force that brought -- who's more important, these bureaucrats or the citizens? I say citizens. I'm speaking here for 300,000 citizens. The only one who comes to the podium vehemently, patriotically, courageously, because who knows, there might be somebody out there who doesn't like me. And anyway, I'm the only one who comes to the podium. I was the one who said, "Hire that lady." I even directed you. I gave you a directive from a retired Air Force fighter-bomber pilot that I am. I directed them to hire her. Of course, the other guy heard me, knowing they're going to direct, follow my directives and hire that lady. So he says, "I may as well not waste an hour of my time going through all these things." But I am proud of that man for agreeing that a full seven to zero, actually, it's eight to zero, because, actually, it's a thousand to zero, because there were seven votes, I'm worth a thousand votes. I voted for that lady. I've already given her a new nickname, by the way. I gave the previous guy a nickname and the financial guy. I'm going to call her Sabra, Sabra the magician, Sabra the magician Newby. And the name Newby doesn't exactly fit, because she's been around a long time. At any rate, does anybody in this room want to argue with anything I've said? You've got three minutes to come up here and do it. No arguments? No arguments? Everybody -- thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you over there. Thank you. And thank you, and thank you. Not the media mouse, no thanks to the media mouse. Dismantle the media mouse.
All right, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
We have no further general public comment.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will be back in five minutes. Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Hi.